All right, let's try it again. One, two, three, four. Checking audio for YouTube on the test. One, two, three, four.
Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. This is the Plan Commission, August 27th, and we will begin the meeting with a motion.
I move to appoint Dan Jashinsky as the Presiding Officer Pro Tem for the August 27th, 2025 Plan Commission meeting.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Speak now. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. I'm at... Okay, next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is roll call.
Okay, Mayor Iker is excused this evening. Dan Cahalen.
Here.
Mike Houseman.
Here.
Dan Jashinsky.
Here.
Scott Cranky.
Here.
Ed Merrick.
Here.
Laura Schultz.
Here.
Alder Person Wilkin.
Here.
City Planner Amy Barrows.
Here.
Building Inspector Scott Hussinger.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, item four is the minutes. Anything on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, item five is citizen comments for items on our consent agenda. There's three items on the consent agenda tonight. If there are any citizen comments for those items. See none, that item is closed. Next is the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. So on the consent agenda was the, um, the What's in the Bowl Pet Shop, Callan Construction, and the Certified Survey Map, the Exterertorial Certified Survey Map in the town of Delafield for William and Mary Karen Irwin. You have been approved, and you're free to leave if you were on those three items. Yep. If you were one of those three, we take those all in one motion. Thank you. Okay, item seven, public hearings. We have none tonight. Item eight is citizen comments on anything else on the agenda. Are there any citizen comments? See, none, that item is closed. Unfinished business, we have none, and we've done very well with that item this year. Ten is new business. Item A, Divine Redeemer Lutheran Church, well, let me see, it's D E L C O 733-994002. The address is 31385 Hill Street. Owner's Divine Redeemer Lutheran Church. Applicant, Michael Oldenburg. Turn your mics on and give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Matthew Maring with Anderson Ash, and my address is 2746 South 166th Street, New Berlin, Wisconsin.
Hi, I'm Mike Oldenburg, Executive Director at Divine Redeemer. My address is 1009 Hilger Road, Heartland.
Thank you. So they're looking to put a gate up. You want to lead us in this, Amy?
Sure. Okay, so if you don't remember, Divine Redeemer's in the northeast corner of the city, north of sixteen, Highway 16, south of 83. They are proposing to install a gate at the middle access point. So just about a year ago, they got approval for a daycare facility on the east side of the property. DOT modified their entrances and exits to the site, and they have a middle exit only, correct, Michael? It's an exit-only lane. And they want to put a gate in that area because the kids do play there during the day, and it prevents people from coming into the site and, and just allows people to exit. So it's a black steel gate. It's a double-swing barrier door, and it is 18 feet from the right-of-way, and they did get written approval from the state for that gate. Because it is kind of close to the right-of-way.
Any comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I give it to you, Mike?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Short and sweet. Item B is D E L C O 751096, 2429 Woodland Park Drive. Owner Gary and Mary Johnson. And they're looking to install a six-foot-tall privacy fence. I've had a few of these lately. Becoming a habit. Come forward and give your name and address.
Turn, turn the mics on.
Yeah, push the bar in front.
Yep.
There you go.
Gary Johnson, 2429 Woodland Park Drive, Delafield, Wisconsin. My wife, Mary.
Same address.
Sure. Thank you. Okay, Amy.
Okay, so this property is just less than a half an acre. It's located on the west side of Woodland Park Drive, west of Nagawicka Lake. I believe it was just last month, or maybe the month before, the pals came in. They own the adjacent property north of them, and they are building a house on that property. That house is going to be built eight feet from the lot line, which that part of the home was allowed by right per code. An eight-foot is the setback in the RL2 district. They have started to grade out the site, and now the, the applicants that are here, they're their direct neighbors to the south, are realizing that that new home location is going to be pretty impactful to their outdoor spaces. They have recently constructed a patio area, which you can see on the aerial photo in the packet that I'm zoom, zooming in here, which is right at the like curve of their property. And so they want to put in a privacy fence that extends the length of the, well, here, I'm gonna go to that survey to make it a little bit easier. So it goes like the length of their home on the north side, and then also at that curve, there's another 18-foot length. And it'll be six feet tall. It is a fence with a lifetime warranty. It's maintenance-free. It's a composite material, which will be light gray color. And, but it does require Plan Commission approval because it's less than 50% open. It'll be within the eight-foot setback. It'll be six inches off the lot line, and it's taller than four feet in height. So Plan Commission is required to review these. Since we have a new Plan Commissioner, I'm just gonna go through what Plan Commission is supposed to consider. You're supposed to look at promoting the public health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the citizens, to enhance the values of property throughout the city, to avoid and prevent deterioration of the general appearance of building structures, landscaping, and open areas, encourage and promote an efficient use of the land, to assure that the site development takes into account efficient provision of vehicular, pedestrian access, public utilities, stormwater facilities, and other elements of public infrastructure and facilities, to encourage and promote acceptability, attractiveness, cohesiveness, and compatibility of new buildings, development, remodeling, and additions, and to preserve and protect the appearance and aesthetic quality of the city. So generally speaking with fencing, we're typically looking at the cohesive and compatible development that protects the aesthetic quality of the city. And so when reviewing this fence, I would just have Plan Commission consider whether or not the applicants have any opportunity to reduce the height, length, or area of the fence in order to accommodate their goals without having, you know, a really long fence. One thing that was discussed internally as staff was, you know, whether or not the applicants have had an opportunity to talk to the owners, because it's my understanding anyway that they're going to be putting quite a bit of landscaping up on their own property, which might create that natural screen. The applicants do not have enough room between their structures and the lot line to put up their own screening, but they may be able to get the adjacent owners to do it at, at the adjacent owner's cost. And/or, you know, can, is there any way to break up that fence with some smaller panels that you could create, you know, have, create that privacy with? So those would be my discussion points. You know, approval is at your discretion. If you do approve the fencing, then a survey does need to be completed to demonstrate that the fence truly will be in the location that they are proposing. That's a requirement of the code.
Amy, you spoke to the neighbors, or?
I did happen to run into the builder of that property, and he said that they would be putting in their own screening as well. I mean, keeping in mind that their house is also backing up to the applicant's property, too.
Did, did they, did anybody ask the neighbors if they had any objection to the fence?
We did not send anything to the neighbors.
You, you didn't? Okay. Other technical question I have is the lots, at least to my naked eye, it looks like your lot might be a little lower than theirs, but I know it's not, it's probably not finished grade yet. But is yours elevated, higher than yours?
Their, the top of their basement will be a foot and a half higher than ours.
Could you speak into the mic? No, it was.
Turn it back on. You just got your closer.
Speak into it. Thank you.
The, the top of their foundation is a foot and a half higher than our existing home. We did request that they reviewed their grading when they applied for the permits. They did, and they modified it to put a swell going around the house so that would run off, because there was a really big concern of ours with water standing. We get standing water where they're building their home now. They did address that. That'll be next year by the time that's done, based on when the house will be finished building. We mentioned that we would like to put up a privacy fence. They mentioned they would plant arbovadas, and I was like, I just retired. I don't have 10 years to wait for them to grow. And the deer, we have a lot of deer, they'll eat them. We had arbovadas once before. Freezer burned. They didn't do well in, in the weather. So we were hoping to enjoy our privacy and get it back. Prior, prior to them building the house last, in 2019 and 2020, they applied to subdivide their property. At that time, the, the Planning Commission passed, approved it. They had a smaller home. It was 12 and a half feet setback off our property line because we had a wooden deck at the time alongside of our house. So to try to maintain our privacy, we removed the wooden deck. We had paver blocks put alongside our house, running to behind our house, so that we could have a privacy patio and be further away from their house. That house didn't pan out. They just recently submitted a plan that you approved a month ago for a larger home. It's now at the eight-foot setback, and it's closer to where our patio is now. We invested four years ago trying to get our patio, you know, and our privacy back, and here we are now in the same situation. That's why we'd like to put up a privacy fence, try to maintain some order of.
The current, the concern I've had, and I've, this doesn't relate to you specifically, is, you know, the city has a code for a reason, and unless the people who've been here a lot longer than me are saying yes, and we're in the process of changing it, the conundrum for me is, I have nothing against fences. I understand the privacy need, but there's probably 50 other homeowners in the city of Delafield who would then come in and say, I want my six-foot fence. And it's very difficult for us to start setting a precedent unless there's something very unique, and none of those other 50 people would meet that uniqueness. And I'm not seeing it here.
I, I think you're a little premature, because I did visit the property on Monday. Was surprised, I put the big hole in the ground, and I, I thought it was really close to your house. I, I think the fence is a little premature right now because you don't know how many windows are going to be facing you. You don't, and the ground, we've had so much rain, and to put in a fence right now seems to me a little risky because the ground, because of the construction going on. They haven't even put in the footing, is there anything yet? haven't even put in the footing, is there anything yet?
No, they did today.
Did they today?
Yeah.
Cause when I went by, it was just a hole in the ground and I'm thinking, you know, the ground is so unstable with all the rain we've had. I'm thinking this is a little premature to me to ask for a fence.
I don't think it's premature.
I don't, I don't know premature.
Did you see how close we were?
Yes, you're very close.
And if we.
Do you know what it used to look like? It was a total wood.
Yes, I know what it used to look like.
Total wooded area.
I've, I visited the last time they wanted to build a house there.
Yeah.
I, I actually go out to the sites.
We're, we're, it's our opinion that our, we're being devaluated. Um, value of our house is being impacted by that house being built right on top of it. Thirty-three years ago, when we purchased a home, prior to purchasing it, we came down here and we asked, can anybody build north or south of us? And they said, the south lot at the time was already zoned unbilledable. The north lot was only like forty, fifty feet wide.
Can you get closer to the mic? They're not catching.
They told us that, you know, something the size of a three and a half car garage to meet the green space, that's all that could be built on it. And I don't begrudge the pals, you know, they subdivided the property, I understand that.
Yeah.
But in retrospect, you know, if I wanted to buy a house in a city and live on top of somebody, I would have.
Yeah.
You know, so here we are thirty-three years ago and just retired and enjoying sitting in the back and enjoying all the green space is gone.
Yeah.
You know, and I'll have someone, you know, they have a couple of windows on the rear of their house, on the side of the house, looking at our gazebo, as well as a little deck, open deck area, they'll be looking right at us on our patio. It's like, I can downsize the fence, but I'd really like to at least have some.
Sense of privacy, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we gotta look at, you know, I'm very concerned about being six inches off the property line. I'm not so concerned that it's within the setbacks because you just don't have the room.
Right.
I can sympathize with that, but six inches is, I, I guess that my concerns are the six inches off the property line and the six-foot tall fence. Maybe like, yeah, it'd be great if we could get some vegetation and or some plants through your neighbor and maybe a four-foot fence or maybe, could you even get that a foot off the property line or are you just too close to that slab?
I could get a foot, yeah.
Cause I, I understand you don't have to be staining this, but occasionally hail, wind damages a fence and you can't get on that side to do repairs if your neighbor doesn't allow you to. These are the things we bump up against in this.
Sure, sure.
So that's why some of these rules are out there is to allow people to.
We, we could, we could go a foot. That wouldn't impact the passability and accessibility. Um, more than that would be tough because the well is located about a foot and a half off the property line, right in the back rear corner.
Is there, is there any downside to, uh, cause I don't know how long it would take to do it, to wait to see what they develop, how they develop, how they landscape so you can get your final strategy, you know, in place? You really know what you want to do?
Um, I really looked hard at all the plans and that were presented in the E packet before they started building. Nothing's going to change. I don't know what would change.
Did they, I didn't know, did they have landscape plans in there?
No.
They don't have landscape plans. They, they have their building plans.
Yeah.
Um, you know, one thing for the plan commission to just know is the, they came to plan commission, but they do meet the eight-foot side yard setback, which is the typical requirement for RL two. So, you know, if there's a string of homes in RL two, they all, they all are limited to eight feet. Um, so they're, they're in compliance with the requirement.
Yeah. Just an idea, you know, then you can kind of see what you got.
Yeah, I mean, what you approved for the new building was an RL two and an RL one lot. You know, we, I had asked, is there any possibility that as long as you're allowing the build, it could be setback farther? Like initially said, uh, back in twenty twenty, when the original building was proved, they were twelve and a half feet off the lot line. Now they're back to eight feet. This is right on top of us.
Yeah. And is that the drawing, the drawing right there, the lower right, that, that is literally the property line and where the fence would be?
Yeah, it's really close.
Yep.
Real close.
We could shake their hand.
Could you, would you consider just doing your patio area, putting a fence up around that?
The deck?
Yeah. Just, just because that's where you sit out and you look out in your yard net and just have it around where your patio area is, not that it runs.
Yeah, we could downsize the length of it. I wouldn't be against that.
Cause I, I think that's your priority here is that you want to be able to have some privacy when you're sitting out in your yard.
Absolutely.
And on your patio. And to me, that's the area that needs to be focused on, not beyond that.
Yeah, we don't necessarily have to run at the length of the house. We could, instead of the sixty feet, we could do thirty feet.
It'd be less expensive for you too.
Not the length of the house.
Yeah.
Well, it's.
So.
It's when I'm looking out my window, what am I looking at?
Well.
Being the patio door, there, that patio door?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Patio, patio.
I think there's some, there has to be some give and take here because I know those, I know that area very well and the lots are very narrow.
Yes.
Houses are very close together. It's like living in the city.
I know. That's why we came here when we bought it to see if anybody could build left or right of us.
Well, I did that over fifty years ago and things change.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, I, I would kind of put your focus more on what your pet, your area where you want to entertain, where you want to sit out in your yard. I would focus more on that.
What would be acceptable.
Yeah.
Yeah, is there a number? Uh, if anyone's thinking about how much shorter you want to make this fence, I want to make a point too, that in one of the pictures where it showed the fence, the fence went right down to the ground. I would recommend leaving it for some drainage.
Oh, no, we would. Absolutely.
Especially if they're putting a swell behind it.
I would not put it to the ground, no.
Good.
So.
You never know, I had to bring it up.
So what we're saying is if people have a privacy concern and I see it and understand it, whenever it's in the ballpark of this, we're now approving five or six-foot fences. And I'm not personally against it, but I just think we have to be mindful of that.
Right.
Absolutely.
This is like the third or fourth time we've gone off the, what I would call the ordinance, we violated it, giving two exceptions to people. And I, I went to school, I went to the state classes for this, for plan commissioners and they say, if you keep doing this, you need to, to adjust your ordinance. And I think that we're at that point, we need to adjust the ordinance. If we keep giving out exceptions for, you don't have to see fifty percent through, you can go six feet, we need to change the ordinance.
Yeah, but then, I agree with that, but then I would take a step back and say, do we want to modify city code by the plan commission making a bunch of exceptions and therefore we have to modify the city code versus a more strategic approach to it?
Yeah.
I don't know. You know, the other thing I noted and it maybe Amy knows or Scott, uh, when I was, because now the construction, I come down right past, um, Nagawicca Heights and just had read these minutes, but I noticed that before, it's coming down that street, all these beautiful homes.
Mm-hmm.
And one home is facing east, but their back patio is not far off of the street and they have their four-foot fence up there and I'm, what occurred to me was, I wonder if they've visualized that when they had their lot and built their house. And now maybe there's an association issue there, I don't know, but.
Probably.
I, I would think, you know, they'll be here next month.
Yeah.
At least if I own that house, I'd be here next month.
Yeah.
That's the issue and it's not personal at all for me to your.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Project.
Well, I'm, I'm not going to disagree with, with Laura on that and four-foot fence really doesn't offer any privacy at all. How would that look, Amy? How would you, how would, how would that process be to change the ordinance?
To change the ordinance? Well, I think you need to determine what, what you, you want to tolerate as a typical use. Um, and if you want to change it to six feet tall, you can, you know, that's your prerogative. Or if you want to get rid of the fifty percent open area, um, that is another option. I think we do have another fence coming in next month or two. I don't know why you're getting so many fences, uh, fence applications, but, um, there does seem to be a trend, so.
What's the fifty percent open? Oh, you mean.
So they're supposed to be fifty percent open in order to encourage that, that cohesive community environment feel.
Got it.
Um, you know, we, we had that one in, in Beacon Hill that came in and those homes are really close together.
Yeah.
And the comment was, you, you bought into this environment knowing that your homes were close to each other and let's prevent the, these isolated zones. But that's, some communities care, some communities don't. I mean, that's a policy decision.
Amy, what was, do you know the date of when the, this code was formulated and passed?
Well, it's been modified twice since, I think, I think Scott was, um, in, in charge, the lead on the fence ordinance, but I believe it was modified right before I started and then it was modified again. And I don't know how it read before that. Was there always a fifty percent open provision, Scott?
No, they, they wanted different levels of fencing so that if it's not very impactful, they just come to me and get a permit.
Right.
Because it's not close to the property line, it's in the backyard, it's only four feet high, it's fifty percent open, like who cares?
Yeah.
Well, now we restricted that.
But I'm curious as to approximate year. I mean, I'm, I'm exaggerating for effect.
If I had to guess.
This code is from nineteen sixty.
No.
Versus ten years ago.
We just, this less than five years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, but I don't know how long the fifty, like was the fifty percent, how long did the city regulate privacy fences? Has it always been in the code?
Yes.
So the privacy part's been in there for a while.
And even the fifty percent open, we, there were just loopholes and we just tightened it up.
But what if we did a shadow box, um, six-foot fence? I know, it's like, is that fifty percent open? It is on a, when you look on an angle.
Yeah, I mean, if the idea is that you're covering all parts.
Yes, straight on you are, but on an angle you're, I mean, we, we, instead of a solid fence, we'd be more willing to go that route with a composite fence. I kind of researched that as well.
Right.
Just in case you foofooed me.
Are you looking to obtain screening from the entire house?
No.
Okay, so just certain areas.
Well, sixty feet.
Just the area, yeah.
Well, six weeks from now, the house will be framed.
Yep.
And the windows will be identified. And if there are key areas or vision lines, then you could do a six-foot panel with landscaping and another six-foot panel versus a sixty-foot long wall.
Cause that wouldn't require, that wouldn't require.
It could be landscaping, right? I mean, it, it's not a sixty-foot fence.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't run to sixty feet, like a break in between. Yeah.
So if you put up a panel and say you put rose bushes on it?
Sure. I mean, we're looking for a solution.
Yeah.
Yeah. The conundrum is, you said you moved because you wanted to be country unless this is in there, so it's more of a country feel, right? We want to, we don't want to launch a big, solid walls up, right?
Right, right, right. So you're saying, you know, a panel, some arborvitae's, a panel, some arborvitae's, stegrit.
Yeah.
That sounds like a good idea, Scott.
So how to proceed? Do you want to wait six weeks? I don't think you do, but at least then we would know where the windows are.
But are you against a shadow box?
I like it as a compromise.
Yeah.
And if we shorten the distance and win shadow box, at least that has some open feel to it.
If you just have one panel, a six-foot panel, plant, you know, planting, six-foot panel plantings all the way down sixty feet.
Oh, that, yeah.
That's going to look pretty.
Well, that's why I said just to your entertainment area.
No, I understand what you said, but I think I would prefer a little bit more.
I do think there would be some value in waiting for the framing if it's that.
Yeah, but we're.
I want to see if it's that close to you, that's probably too long, but I, if you would be willing to wait and see how that thing.
Well, it's not like we're going to go out tomorrow and do a fence, even if you did approve it, but at the same time, he has, Gary has looked at those plans eight hours a day, seven days a week, you know? You can't imagine how much he has studied.
It's been devastating.
Oh, I, I get it, but their three-D spatial relationship between the two buildings, you might go, oh, man.
Yeah, and except for the builders.
They already poured the footing, so the visual is, it's real.
And except for the builders, you know, there's no privacy concerns where the house is being built because there's no one living in it.
Yeah.
To wait and kind of get you, and it gives you an opportunity to think through the screening and if that would, you think that could make sense for you.
Yeah, and come back with a plan and a sample of what you want would help.
Okay.
Okay? Cause it's all, we're very, I'm very visual too. Um, so if, if you come back with a, where you shortened it, come back with a, an idea of what your fencing, new fencing would like, you would like it to look like, um, and have a plan. Yeah, and then also you might want to put in there, when do you want to start putting it in? You know, a start date.
We were hoping before the ground froze.
Yeah.
Well, if, if you waited the six weeks, you'd be coming back here the end of October.
Yeah.
But you have to wait six weeks. Could we be on the agenda maybe in September?
Yeah, you, you certainly have the right to be on the agenda in September. We were just concerned about what will the progress be of their house and will you have a feel for whether you need to adjust that fence and.
Mm-hmm.
That's all we're asking is that.
No, I understand.
And, and then maybe you want six feet here, but you'd be okay with four feet here or.
Yeah.
And just maybe a little more time to think it through because we certainly are concerned about precedents and, yet we sympathize with your situation.
Do you want me to call the builder and get a timeline and see if they have a landscape plan, um, for your planning purposes?
Yeah, I'll take any help I can get.
Is, is it the worst to do an early spring fence? So you really can take, I know you've been working on it, but see what's up there and like these guys are saying, like fine tune your strategy? Is that, is there a reason you feel like over the winter it, you want to get it done?
I was hoping to get it up. I've already gotten quotes and everything and guys are ready to do it as soon as they had approval. I just don't want to watch the building going on.
Oh.
And the other thought I had.
I mean, we'd basically sit outside every night, every morning, you know, we're retired now, enjoying, trying to enjoy retirement and now you got this mess of project going on right out our door.
Sure.
The other thought I had is this, um, landscaping, you had mentioned two feet.
I mean theoretically, if it's a two-foot upgrade and you have a four-foot fence on top of that, well, it wouldn't be on that grade because that would be their property.
Yeah, the grades on, hers property.
Right, right.
Yeah. Have you talked to the neighbors about, maybe they'd prefer to put in arborvitae's than you put up a six-foot fence?
They would prefer that.
They would prefer that, yeah.
So we have spoke to them.
They, they have, they have, they mentioned they would plant arborvitae's and I said, well, how long? You know, I don't have ten years to wait for them to grow and I want my privacy now.
You can pull, I mean.
Well, how big were they presenting the?
They did not.
They really didn't present a plan, they just mentioned it.
So I, a couple of things. Number one, just visualizing what the fence would look like. I personally would, would not like it at all when you're basically walking along that fence to get to your house. That, I mean, you don't have anything natural that, you basically got a stockade. That's just me though. I'm scared when we start talking about changing the fencing because your property is an exceptional circumstance and this isn't just about you, but I look at the lake properties, I can see people wanting to, one after another.
Yeah.
Because my house is 16 feet from my neighbors.
Yeah.
Like, we got a lot of arbivita going on there, which, you know, that's just nature of the beast. I, you know, you start building these fences and we've said no as many times as we've said yes or more times, then we start getting into a situation where we just, this isn't what the aesthetic we're shooting for. This isn't, I don't think, what we wanted unless we've changed our mind.
And if if the neighbor prefers landscaping instead of your fence, you can buy, I mean, they'll have to pay for it and they're more expensive, but you can buy seven-foot, eight-foot, nine-foot arbivitas and have them planted.
Us planting them on our property is not a viable option.
No, I was talking about the neighbor.
But if they're willing.
Yeah, but how do you get them to do that?
Well, I don't know.
Well, okay, so one idea is threaten them with, okay, you're talking to us about getting a fence. If they don't want the fence there.
We have said that.
Okay, well, tell them you're continuing to talk to us and we're very concerned and would much prefer seeing them put up arbivita that are, or whatever, something that separates to a reasonable height.
Yep.
To Scott's point.
I don't necessarily see resolution at this. I would, I would prefer if you came in in September or October and it gives us all time to think about this, both sides and, you know, and maybe enough of it's framed in in the next four weeks that you can come in and say, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, they could get on the agenda and I'll just pull out if, yeah, you could just get on the September agenda. If you don't, if you feel it's advantageous to wait another month, you can just remove your agenda item.
Okay.
Sound good?
Sounds fine.
All right.
Thank you.
Do we need to deny this one then or?
I think you could, you could make a motion to postpone action until a future meeting date after the applicant has an opportunity to consider the neighbor's plans more carefully.
So moved.
Second.
I don't think the city planner can make the motion. I think, but it's a nice one. Somebody wants to just repeat it. I'm happy to repeat what you just said.
We do that every week?
Yeah, we do it all the time.
We got, I think we have to slow down.
The so moved didn't work?
No.
I'll make a motion to postpone this agenda on the item for future consideration when the applicant is ready to bring it forth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Thanks for your understanding.
You can hear my name.
You have to get on this side to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 10C, nine, D E L C O 799997001, 920 Indian Spring Drive. Owner is 920 Indian Spring Drive LLC applicant. Applicant, it says Tammy Kevin.
Yes.
Okay, applicant seeks site plan appearance approval to expand existing parking lot to accommodate Telefield Dental. Here, you know, you know the routine.
Yes, Tammy Kevin, my address is 621 Bakersfield Drive, Sullivan, Wisconsin.
And I think this is a reflection of a good problem, but if you want to lead this off, Amy.
Okay, so Tammy's been in here a few times over the last few years. This is the Telefield Dental Clinic on Indian Spring Road off of 94, and they are currently operating as a dental office and they do have approval for a dental assistance school as well. They put in addition a few years ago and they do have sufficient parking per the ordinance, but you may notice that they do oftentimes have parking on Indian Spring Drive as well. They are a pretty busy office. So they are proposing some additional parking as much as they can try to fit in here. Specifically, they want four parking stalls along Indian Spring. I'm showing you here on the plan, right as you enter the site. There's an existing stone retaining wall there. It's just a few feet high, it gets a little bit higher as you come in. So they're going to need to rebuild or reinforce that wall to be a five-foot-tall wall. Any wall that's more than three feet in height does require special consideration. We need to make sure that it's being constructed in a stable manner to protect the pavement behind it and to protect the soil on the low end, plus that is a drainage area and hold stormwater on the low side. So we will need engineer plans for the retaining wall as a condition of approval. And then they're also proposing seven additional stalls on the, what is that, the south end of the upper parking lot, I'll call it. Right now, there is a nice, long fence, is it cedar, cedar?
Yep.
I don't have, okay, cedar fence, completely private. They will be, in this case, you do want to have that scenario because you're preventing the headlights from direct, being directed onto adjacent properties. They are willing to extend that fencing to the full length of the new parking lot. I guess one question I had with that is whether or not we also need to extend it wrapping around.
I assumed we would wrap the entire thing.
Okay.
And so our agreement will be, we will completely wrap it so that it's, there's no way that there's any lights going.
Good.
Okay. So they would wrap that parking lot and then I did talk to engineering. They do not trigger a stormwater permit because there's less than a half an acre of disturbance, including this and some previous parking improvements, but they will need an erosion control permit for the disturbance area and then they'll need that engineer approval for the retaining walls and then making sure that that fence gets properly extended.
One question. Was this looked at for radius for backing out?
That's one of my concerns is those seven stalls, I really question, I mean, there is software that engineers can use.
I did too, and they did, they did that when they were looking at, yes.
Auto turn, they can project it on there.
To make sure, that's why we had to go a certain, far enough back to do that.
I did, actually, and thanks for bringing that up. I did send it to the fire department and they are, they are taking a look at the plan. So they do have it in their, in their hands. My understanding is I think they only need to get, if you're looking at emergency access, they only need to get to a certain point of the site, but then they need to be able to turn around.
We're talking about these stalls.
The other big issue was when the contractors did the driveway in the beginning, he was supposed, that used to be like a turnaround.
Right.
Till we found out that we didn't even own the other part that it was on.
Yeah.
When they took that, they were supposed to double that or widen that width so that coming in and out, there wouldn't be any traffic stopping or uncomfortableness. So that is also included in there to make it.
Are you talking about the west side?
The only entrance that's there now.
Oh, okay.
Was to be widened and they didn't do it. They were supposed to at the time, so that is on there also.
So you're looking to widen the existing entrance.
We want to widen that, yeah, because you should be able to have the two cars pulling in and out safely and then remove any street parking.
Yeah.
Um, yes, we should look at that 14-foot aisle.
Yeah, I, you know, I, if if you can't get pickup trucks in and out of those seven stalls, certainly there's, there's signs out there, you could say compact cars only.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, if there's no other way to lengthen this, but I do question if longer vehicles can back in and out of that spot.
Yeah. My concern, too, is that the last stall on the east, well, the two last stalls on the east side, when they back up, if you're not real good at backing up, you could back up right into that car that's in that stall up against the office. So that's, that's another concern.
Yeah, I would take a look, double-check that.
We will definitely double-check that and that was the other reason that we wanted them in both spots to make sure that there was still enough to keep any overflow off the street.
Yeah, I mean, it's great if they make those turns.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, the only, the only thing I'll mention, too, is, you know, the first four leading in with the, right now, I know you're saying you want to expand that to 20 feet. It, to me, it's just concerning having, especially the the further north, you know, one or two of those, you're backing up and you're blocking, you're blocking everything right there. And I just think that that's more of a hazard if someone's not paying attention. Granted, that can happen anywhere, but especially at an entrance point.
Right.
I just don't see the, I don't see how you could safely get those four in there, especially those top two on the north end along the roadway. I just don't see that being an overly safe area there.
Actually, that would be, that would be a spot where the employees would park, so they would be there all day long also and only pulling out when nobody's coming in and out usually.
Yeah.
But.
But you would have the market.
I mean, would you put a sign there then, say employee parking only?
Yeah, we can do that.
You know, because then, then, yeah, I get that parked there.
Yeah, that, because that's where we all do parks, so that would be the existence of it.
All right.
Yeah, I can easily put employee parking.
Yeah, and and I agree, the stalls on, the the seven stalls, that's just really tight trying to get it in there.
I, I agree, so I think it's our wish for seven.
So, you know, just, just want to, just want to express that.
I have a, have a feeling we may be down to a couple less, but.
Yeah. It would be nice to get them off the road.
That's our main thing is we don't want anybody on the road and everybody's safe.
I agree, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? And we could entertain a motion with those, with that criteria where they come back with.
Well, we're going to have the fire department look at this first, right?
Yes, they are, they they are reviewing it.
So.
And the, well, the aisles, that has more to do with turn, cars turning in and out. I'll have engineering take a look at that.
So we're not, so we won't be approving your plan. It'll come back is what the, this will have to come back.
Yes, this will have to come back.
When all the entities do their review.
So right now, we're scheduled for the end of September for construction.
Oh.
Would that be able to proceed at this point or do I have to cancel that?
Well, September 24th is our meeting. I'm not sure, when were you, I think it was the 27th.
Can't we approve a motion that's contingent upon?
The spaces.
Kind of direction I was going in.
Yeah, yeah.
You can make a contingent upon those turning movements.
Right.
Engineering review.
Fire department, fire department.
Employee parking signs.
Fire.
Fire review. So, yeah, you can include all those in in your motion.
That speed up, take it.
Yeah, it gives them.
We could at least get things rolling for them to fall and then, you know, how they do the striping, because we'll have to have it restriped anyways, could be based on that.
So that would be, you know, staff review and approval of those items that they've met those.
Right.
And then Dan did just state that he thinks it should go to Public Works, too.
Which is.
They have a meeting next.
Yeah, next week, Wednesday.
Next week, Wednesday. They, applicants may or may not have updated plans for that meeting. Probably won't, you probably won't have updated plans or our review of your existing plans.
What plan do you need from me further than?
If you need to change any of the stalls.
Oh, yeah, I don't think they'd have them to us that.
So they would probably make their review contingent as well.
Yeah, I think it should.
Could it be contingent, you know, like we said, get the construction starting and then the stalls would all be rated upon what the Public Works and the Fire Department and engineers say.
Amy, would they need a PSC because of the encroachment or possible encroachment into the septic field?
We did have that all checked.
Okay.
To make sure, he said we were plenty, plenty far enough. That was my fear, I didn't think we could do anything up there, but.
They don't, do they, they don't require anything for pavement?
Tell me no, they, I got that from the county.
You can see there's three item, three items under Amy's recommendation and certainly could add to that.
Right. And I think they're the ones that I had and Laura mentioned, or the two.
Yeah, with the fire department review.
Fire department review.
And checking the turning movement.
Turning radius.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then.
And I don't know if it falls under those, but that, I think it's the seventh slot, whether removing that remediates, is a one remediation for all the other issues, I don't know, but maybe that's.
I think that would come into the turning radius, too.
Which Public Works will look at next week and there may be some ideals that come out of there, too.
Yeah.
That's why I want them to review it.
Yeah. Well, make a motion to approve the plan pursuant to points one, two, and three from the city planner, in addition to having engineering evaluate turning radius and, or the fire department, fire department review.
And we're forgetting something.
DPW.
Employee parking only, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, employee parking only with signage.
In the lower lot.
Yeah, in the lower lot with signage.
I second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you guys for.
Thank you. Okay, next item, 10D, D E L C O 799998, N D E L C O 799999, 940 Indian Spring Drive and 1050 Indian Spring Drive. Owner Sean and Colleen Kelly, revocable trust. The applicant is Sean Kelly and we're looking to do some grading on the property. Name and address for the record.
Yes, it's Sean Kelly and the address is North 48 W 26411 Bayberry Court, Peewalki, Wisconsin 53072.
So this is next door to the dental office that we were just talking about, vacant lot. So if you want to summarize things, Amy.
Okay, so just moving east, the applicant does have two adjacent properties, two separate lots of record. They're proposing to grade on the western lot, but the drainage does go toward the eastern lot, so I do want to make sure that we include that parcel as well. The applicant did obtain the erosion control permit for some grading activities last year or actually, well, 20, early 2024, and they, in that application, they were disturbing about approximately a half an acre. That grading has, has been ongoing ever since. So we did ask the applicant to come in with a more finalized plan, finish the job, stabilize the site and and get it closed. So that is why they're here now, tonight. They did receive a DNR permit for, for the grading activities. We, our engineering staff was under the impression a DNR permit was not actually required because it's under an acre of disturbance, but the applicant did get one. So we'll just confirm with the DNR what grading activities they did permit back when the permit was issued because it may or may not match the, the current plan that we have now. And then they do, are removing, proposing to remove several trees. Well, let me go back here, so let's see. This is the, on the screen, the grading plan. So what they're trying to do is fill an area of the site so that it's more marketable for development in the future. There is a low area, you can see on the plans, there's a red hatched area that does hold soil. There's a natural kettle, you can see it on the topography maps, and the engineering department did work with the applicant's engineer to make sure that that volume that's, that's storing water will still be maintained with, even after this fill activity. So they're filling the whole thing, but then they're creating like a new depressional area. It was brought to my attention that there may be a wetland out here. There is a wetland that showed up on a site plan map in 2016 when you all, or some of you probably reviewed a proposal for Hope Church. I was not aware of that proposal until Laura brought it to my attention, but there, there is a wetland on there. I don't see any kind of wetland delineation that goes with it or any kind of approval. So we'll have to look into that. I don't know whether or not it is or isn't a formal wetland, but at this point, what we'll need to do is have the DNR, they can go out there and maybe they've already done this and they have written documentation, but they, they'll go out there and they'll determine whether or not it's present. They don't usually do a full delineation, but with their determination letter, it'll, they will, they may require, well, we would require a delineation if they decide that there is a wetland present. So we'll have to work through that before he can continue any more grading activities. I did talk to the applicant about that today. And then as part of this project, if it does move forward, he is proposing to cut several trees, most of them are on the priority tree list. So looking at this list, he's proposing to cut 40 trees. Some of them are dead disease dying, some are questionable per the applicant. We'll want to have the city's forester, arborist go out there and make that verification. He has met the applicant on site, but we need to have some, some more formal written documentation. But, you know, assuming that the applicant is correct in his assessment, then he would need to mitigate at least 167 and a half inches worth of trees, and that's not including the dead and, dead disease dying trees. He's proposing to plant 84 new trees, which would equal 172 and a half inches. So if this all works out the way that he, that the applicant has in the application, then he would exceed the number of inches required and in lieu, fee mitigation wouldn't be required. He is proposing a combination of deciduous nevergreen trees rather than them being placed throughout the site. They are being proposed, where is it here? Mostly along the property owners in order to create that vegetative screen as well. We do need to confirm as part of the ordinance that the amount of trees being cut don't exceed 40% of the, so it depends on how the site is used. If we're just looking at the westernmost site, 40% of the overall trees. So there, there needs to be a, a total tree count completed. So with that, the, the biggest issue here, engineering did review it and they believe the grading activities will accommodate drainage. There is this, so water will collect in that kettle and then there will be a pipe that outlets into a swale to the south that is directed to the east. And it is recommended that this item does go to Public Works as well for a more detailed And it is recommended that this item does go to Public Works as well for a more detailed technical stormwater management review. But our engineering staff did take a look at that. Really what we need to find out is whether or not there is a wetland on site that the D N R is going to regulate. There is no mapped wetland on the sewer pack maps, D N R maps, or the city maps. So we don't really have a mechanism in our code that prevents construction. But, but wetland fill is definitely a requirement of the D N R. And so we need to, and then we can look at it from a, a resource impact perspective. But we need to understand what we're looking at first and what that area is. So any approvals, if you so choose to approve, need to be contingent upon that wetland area being properly assessed and that all necessary permits being issued prior to commencing any construction and prior to the issuance of an erosion control permit unless you want them to come back. Just know if he comes back each month, he comes back, he's also going to run out of time to restore the site and and he might get pushed, you know, it might get pushed into next season if we don't get the site restored. Alternatively, he could restore what's there and, and leave it. So any, any approvals would be contingent upon erosion control permit being issued. The landscape plan being reviewed by engineering staff to ensure that no new planted trees are impacting the drainage because they are on, going along the lot line where the swale is. That the city arborist verify the accuracy of the health of the trees. And if there's any additional healthy trees to be removed that are not listed on the plans, the applicants required to plant an equivalent amount of trees or pay the in lieu mitigation fee. And all land alternate activities shall be completed and the site restored with seed and mulch prior to October fifteenth unless extended by city staff. And then that condition I read regarding the applicant shall demonstrate that they have or that the wetland area shall be assessed by D N R staff and that all necessary permits be issued prior to commencing construction and prior to the issuance of an erosion control permit. And that they go to Public Works.
Sean, you have any more to add?
Not really, honestly. Amy and I did talk today about this wetland that was supposedly put on a plan that I wasn't aware of either until Amy brought up to me. Laura, who, her and her husband live just to the south of me. She had mentioned that she thought there was a spring there and I had told her that I had already pulled the permit with the D N R. Also, I had, I had been hunting, I'd been bow hunting that land since I bought it in, I believe, two thousand and twelve. Never did I notice any wetland areas. I mean, it might have been a little bit wetter in some areas in that same quadrant, but that's where everything pitches to, so that would make good sense. But doing our due diligence, like Amy had mentioned, getting ahold of the D N R, seeing if there is some kind of disturbance there that would be causing, then that extends the whole idea of doing the project. But simply enough, we're trying to just level it off. And it just so happens that I've got a couple of grading companies that have fills that would be appropriate because I can't just drop anything there. I want it to be a stabilized fill. So I, as Amy had also mentioned, I've been dealing with Brian from the village or from the city for P H. And I had actually completely closed off the site last year, got it graded, put in the appropriate grass and everything and everything had taken. And I had talked with Brian this spring about keeping going with the project. And then that's where this kind of resolution is, is I would like to just get it done. I'd like to get it backfilled completely and help neighboring properties by putting in plant life and stuff like that. That's going to screen them from the freeway system and from any future build that might take place. That's about the long and short of it.
Well, as a resident of Indian Spring Drive, thirty years, I do have some issues with this. First off, I don't understand, you said that this is lower than properties to the west and east. It's not lower to any properties to the east. Lappin Peak Road is there and then there's a vacant lot and it's just, it goes down. So we're only talking about the dental office. I also don't really see why raising this up a little bit makes it more marketable. So those are my issues. I'm certainly concerned about environmental issues with this one too. And I do concur that the D N R needs to look at that. But we need proof that they would be okay with this.
Sure. No, and I understand all that. Like I said, once she showed me that, so years ago, I had an offer to purchase it, like she said, two thousand and sixteen or wherever it was. I just so happened to be building a new landscape business shop out in Lanin, which I spent a couple of million dollars on and I was open to selling the property at that moment. At that moment, Hope Church had come in here. Once again, I was not part of that at all. So seeing those plans today when Amy had mentioned it, I was like, well, if there's something there, then that has to be brought to light and see if that's actually legitimate or if that's just something that was pegged there because they saw it was a little damp during heavier rains, whatever it may have been. To your point about it being lower versus higher, well, the property to the east of it is definitely higher. And I would like to kind of keep the property.
Probably to the west, might be, not to the east. Across Lappin Peak Road?
No, to the, directly to the east of the property I own. I'm talking about.
Well, the second property.
There's, there's two parcels. I would like to fill, no, you're all good.
I thought you meant more east.
No, no, no. I would like to fill in my middle parcel is what we'll say, between the dental office and my property to the east. And basically get the topography to be laid out appropriately so that if there was future development, there's more access to buildable land. So we don't run into parking lot issues, that's the other thing. I have no idea what would be developed there. It could be something smaller of scale, which would be great for the neighborhood. I would love that to take place. The reality of it is it's a five acre parcel on ninety four and it is a commercial property and we want to get the value back out of it that we've put into it thus far.
Yeah, I mean, there, there have been other proposals. There was a duplex development that Jeff Stoll had proposed and, yeah, it's had, and you had proposed moving your headquarters. I was on this commission way back then too.
I was a younger man back then and so were you. So has.
Yes.
It has been for you.
It has been a while.
Yeah.
So anyone else have any concerns to share? Laura, you must have some comments.
I'm going to have a lot.
I assume so.
So if anybody wants to go before me, go ahead.
I just had a question for Dan. Would your concern about the elevation be solved by the D N R review? Or does there need to be another?
No, I mean, I, I just, I don't necessarily, this is just me personally. I don't see it being more marketable by raising it up before.
Oh, I see. Okay.
What is the highest you plan on raising that up?
It's going to be.
I didn't look at the.
No, you're, you're good. It's going to be completely level with the lot adjacent to it. So it's not going to be elevated any higher than to the one to the east.
Five feet.
It's like four or five feet. It looks like the low area.
There's literally a bowl right there, hence the water will be in that one area.
Stand and back in there.
Exactly, right there.
Okay.
The lowest area is, I think, like nine sixty six and they're filling to nine seventy and then nine sixty nine. So the highest is about four, four or five feet.
Yeah, approximately, yeah.
But to answer your question, Scott, this area you really can't see from the road. And I'm not a trespasser, so I've never gone on this property, but I think Laura can speak.
Okay.
Yeah. I've lived behind this property for fifty two years. And when I first moved there, there was another building directly behind me, close to the road. It caught on fire and two people died in it. The foundation was never removed. There always was a pond there. That was fenced in because at one point I found out from my neighbor who lived there many years ago that they kept chickens and ducks there. And they did extend, extend, extend the pond a little bit. It was a, it's a natural spring. They did extend, extend it a little bit because of the animals that they had. And this was all fenced in for these animals. How I found out that definitely that it was a pond was last summer when it was so dry. Everything dried up around us, even the ponds on the corner by sea. They were a third of what they normally were. The creek dried up, but I went in the back and it had water in this pond. And then I knew it was a spring because it was crystal clear. And I have, after reading the soil report and that, I believe that my whole street is on that aquifer that that pond is on. Because our wells are very shallow compared to other areas. And matter of fact, when I had my water tested, the man would not believe we lived in Waukesha County. Because my water is crystal clear. It is, it doesn't have any odor and it has very little iron and it tastes great. Even the contractors that come and use the outside spigot said, is this soft and water? I go, no, it's well water. They said, no. So I'm, I'm very, the only thing I'm really concerned about, the rest I don't care about, is that spring. Because in reading the report, the soil report that Hope Church did in two thousand and sixteen, this area right here, they, they feel could be bedrock. So this could be a fracture in the bedrock for this spring. And from reading our ordinances in our master plan, our, our master plan about groundwater contamination, they even emphasized we have to be very careful. And I believe that because my, I live in this kettle. There's only one road in, one road out. And everything that flows in my area flows towards the creek. If our wells become contaminated because this was not held, handled properly, it will not only contaminate our area, but this flows into the lake. So I am very concerned. And I was today quite upset that I did not receive this. And lucky thing, I looked at this at five o'clock. It was not in the packet. I thought this is very unprofessional. It should have been in the packet that we received.
Can you tell us what that is, Laura?
This, you didn't even get it. It's his permit for what would you call this?
It's the grading permit.
Stormwater runoff from the D N, D N R. It had mentioned nothing in here about the spring. But Hope Church identified it. I have Hefner's letter here from two thousand and sixteen where he says that the interior wetlands do not appear to be protected with any erosion control measures when Hope Church wanted to build there. So to me, this sets precedence. It's been recognized a couple of times as a wetland. The D N R did come out. My husband called and they came right away. And this was, the picture that you have there is at the end of winter. You can kind of tell on the north side where there's dead cattails. When the D N R came out, that was all cattails, that whole area. And he took one look at it and said, wetland. And he took pictures. So I'm, I'm, and I'm willing to stand on this. I believe that that is a natural spring because my whole area is nothing but springs. You go down Lappin Peak Road towards the creek and the water table's five inches from the surface. So I only care about this, about this spring and protecting it. Because I do not want it to contain, I, I'm not going to be around that much longer. I'm up there in age and I know I won't be. But I want to protect my neighbors and whoever's going to live there in the future. And my area and this lake. Because I don't want to see anything get contaminated.
For those of you not familiar with the area, what Laura's talking about, just to the south is Oddly Creek. It actually kind of starts where by Highway C, it runs east, west through this area into a pond. And then it goes under I ninety four and right into Nagawicka Lake.
Yeah, goes into Frog Alley and into the lake.
Would the D N R review get at this issue or do you need some specialist?
We need that. I think we need something from D N R that says, fine, or no, we've got to protect this.
Yeah, and one, one of the problems is that he has already covered the, the spring. He has already back.
Well, then I think we need to talk with D N R about.
Yeah, and that, if, if there's a spring and there's been fill, they can, they can identify the fill versus the native soil and, and we can recover the original circumstance. But just like the D N R, you know, I know Laura's upset the wetland permit wasn't included in the packet. We didn't even know, or I didn't even know that he had a wetland permit. The, the amount of disturbance that he's done so far actually does not trigger a D N R permit. So we wouldn't have asked for that. And then also from the D N R's perspective, if they weren't involved in two thousand and sixteen, like I, I also was not involved in that, there's no indicators, you know, springs are tricky because they pop up and you, they're, they're, they're not necessarily documented historically. But there's no triggers when you look at, and I've looked at all of it. I, I am pretty knowledgeable on wetlands. So I, I looked at the soil layers. I looked at the wetland layers. I looked at sewer pack layers. I looked at the city maps and there's no indication of wetlands at all. There's a kettle, which is what Brian, the engineering staff is trying to protect, is the storage of the kettle. That kettle is, is within the same area that Laura is talking about. So we just, we need to understand the area. If it's a wetland, it will show. It'll be in the soils, the actual soil texture and color and all of that. That those, those, that creates a very historical record of what is there. And then they, we need to discover what the source of that wetland is. Is it a spring? Is it from the kettle? Is it internally drained area? I mean, it does appear to be an internally drained area to some degree. So all I can say is that we have to do our homework and figure that out. And I'm grateful that Laura brought it to our attention and, and I apologize if you didn't have the information you needed. I didn't know about it. So now I do. So we will certainly look into this further. And the applicant knows that we're going to do that.
To the point of the D N R permitting, once again, as Amy had mentioned, it wasn't a necessity for me to get it. I did that out of my own due diligence to see if there was any, because Brian, who was there prior to us putting in the stuff from North Lake. So just so you know, all of the material that we had brought was from North Lake, which was all very, very, very wet material. That is literally where we had placed it was right where she is saying that there was cattails. I had owned the property for years before, hunted there every year, not once. And I mean, not one time did I ever see any cattails or any really standing water. And as I've mentioned that to Laura in the past, I'm not trying to conflict properties. I mean, that's the reason that we're putting the trees where we are is to actually help the neighbors, give them the screening, make it still look natural as possible. The reality of it is, is a commercial property. It will be developed at some point. And I'm just trying to mitigate anything that would be going forward. Laura brings to a point about contamination. I don't know exactly what she's speaking of, but all we're going to be bringing in there is going to be clean fill. I sure as hell wouldn't be bringing in contaminated soils. In fact, when we bought the property, we bought it with the knowledge, knowing that the D N R did not have a checked off permit on it because there used to be gas tanks there. We did our due diligence, got the gas tanks actually legally removed and did everything like that when we first acquired the property. So I'm a very big into natural, I mean, Laura's seen me at the property probably a hundred times. I, I walked the property and it's not a very big parcel to walk, so it's a very short walk. But the reality of it is, is that we've been doing everything in the right order. Laura had mentioned that the cattails, well, this was an area of, let's just estimate forty by forty, maybe just a little bit larger, forty feet by forty feet, that is, that these cattails had just started growing. This just happened this last year. Actually, I take that back. It happened last year, mid-year after we had done the grading and everything. Because I bow hunted there last year and actually set up my ground blind right next to it for the amusement of the turkeys. But there is nothing historically or anything like that that shows any proof of this. She brings up something about the foundation. I have no idea where that foundation was. You and I had to discuss that last year. Because I was talking about the annexed buildings. I had heard about it burning down. I don't know where that is. And we've been over that property with skids, tears and everything like that. I've never.
Up close to the, up close to Indian Springs.
Where the motel was.
Well, there was motel and then to the west. When you come in that western parking driveway, it was right on, on the side of that.
Up on top of the hill higher than?
It was up on top. You could see it from the freeway.
I haven't seen it ever. I mean, I actually had originally when I bought the property, I bought it from the original owners and they actually gave me a postcard showing the stuff and I unfortunately misplaced it. Because I'd love to have had it because it was, it was kind of cute. But the reality of it is, we've done nothing to disturb the land and do anything that would be hurting anybody around us. That's for damn sure. The fill that we brought in, that she's mentioning, that the wetness that was there, that was soil that was literally from the foundation of a house on North Lake that we had dug down and we brought in, and Brian is aware of that, four hundred and forty yards approximately of wet fill. That wet fill is very climatic, so that water would seep up on top of it. And that's probably the issue behind what you see for that little area. But granted, doing what Amy and I, and I believe everybody would agree to, is the fact of having the D N R look at it, they can easily do soil borings. The area in which she's speaking of, we went over it. If I were to guess, maybe six inches, and this just happened last few weeks, as she knows, just over a month ago. We had the grading out there, which Amy was aware of. We wanted to push the piles of fill that we had started placing up on top so it didn't look like an eyesore down into the, the kettle. There's still definitely a kettle present, so there's no issues with any drainage. In fact, during that, I was, I was in Europe, thank God for a very beautiful trip, but you guys got a lot of rain and I don't believe there's any disturbance. In fact, I looked at the, the grass had already regrown in most of the areas and on the back southern portion by you guys, I didn't notice any disturbance. Am I correct?
I see water, standing water.
Erosion at all?
It's hard to tell because of all the tall grass. But I did, there is a ravine. There was a deep ravine behind my neighbor to the east, Mr. Higgs, that I could stand in and I could not touch the top. That has been partially filled. Because that thing, and when we get heavy rains, that would fill with thousands of gallons of water. And it held back the water.
Okay, I don't know anything about the ravine being filled. I'll be honest with you.
Yeah, it's not as deep as it was.
Right next to your property, that is.
No, behind Mr. Higgs to the east.
Yeah, that wasn't touched by us at all. That I know for a fact. We didn't touch it at all.
Well, you, while you guys were in there getting boulders out and everything else.
Correct. But there wasn't anything that we filled, is what I'm getting at.
I seen one day they were, yeah.
And when he was talking, when she, when he was referencing the erosion, I think he was asking on your part, property was there erosion? Because there wasn't anything, because we have actually silt socks there to.
Yeah, you have, and you kind of made that swale that went down into the ravine.
Yep, yep.
Well, I think we're.
Trying to get water to go the right direction.
We're at a spot, we're debating, he said, she said, and I think, I don't know if you all agree that we're at a point where there's enough concern.
Get the D N R involved, right? So there's not.
I think there's enough concern.
Circles the rest.
Right, we can go on and we need to wrap this up.
What I'm just wondering is if the D N R were to stipulate there is no wetlands, would you guys have any issues with me filling it, replacing the kettle-like format there? Because obviously now the parking lot's going to be larger at the dental office, which means it's going to be runoff in my direction. Granted, it's, most of it is going towards the north, towards the retention. But the reality of it is, I'm going to leave a kettle there. I just want to get the elevation up and tell whoever develops, they can deal with if they have to do retention ponds or anything like that. But we want to get that southern portion filled with greenery and stuff like that. But we want to get that southern portion filled with greenery and stuff like that, which is going to be something that would, I'm very conflicted by the fact that you're opposed to it because I'm actually giving what I would say is a hell of a backdrop for you and your husband's place and minimizing issues for you guys long time, or for longevity. But the only concerns I would have is the DNR checkoff. Number two is Amy, you just mentioned to me today, that I didn't hear before, was the forty percent trees. I'll have to look into that because that might exceed that forty percent cut down. Now, is it forty percent needs to be left or forty percent?
Cut.
You cannot exceed.
Maximum forty percent cut.
And I did not look at that, so I might actually already have to tweak some things a little bit. So thank you for mentioning that. But the DNR checkoff, making sure that it is no wetlands present, that's key, which I agree with. But there hasn't been any delineation, so we want to make sure of that, number one. And then number two is just the concerns, Laura, just to put your mind at rest, there's not going to be any contamination. I'm not bringing in any fill from any, you know, tower automotive or anything foolish. Like this is clean fill coming off of sites for people to build houses and they're just getting rid of their fill.
All right, well, we need to, and I appreciate what you're looking to do and all the plantings, but we've got assure ourselves on our end that there aren't any detrimental effects to surrounding properties. And look at the wetland issue, you need to look at the tree issue. So, I, I mean, is next month?
Then we're going to be like Amy and I discussed, if we wait a month.
I get it.
It's, it's.
But we can't just approve either.
No, no, I get that. But I would say, oops, I would say conditional based on the list of the DNR. Basically, checking out that the DNR is not going to be an issue. If the DNR is not an issue, I don't see what else would be an issue, quite honestly, in my opinion. But then again, there's a reason there's a board.
Yeah, I think the commission would have to be comfortable with what we're looking for to be approved at a staff level or if we have them come back. That's, that's pretty much where we're at right now.
Well, isn't, it seems to me our standard approach would be to prove this pursuant to the city planners, one, two, and three, and then add a fourth for the DNR. And.
Well, what if the DNR, the DNR says?
Your mic's not on, Dan.
If the DNR says there's not a, a wetland, isn't everything he wants to do?
There's a tree issue, yeah.
Okay, and the tree, if he doesn't cut down more than forty percent, is everything else he wants to do per code?
There aren't many left.
That's, that's a good question. I, I don't know to what degree we've looked at runoff from this site. If the fill is going to, what effect this fill is going to have on adjoining properties.
Yeah, so I believe that's what Brian has been reviewing, and the applicant has an engineer that did an analysis. And the drainage, the runoff is being directed to the east where it currently is being directed to. And the amount of storage that they're providing in that kettle is, compensates equally for what's there now. But we can have, I mean, you can have Brian prepare a more formal report or take it to Public Works. To be totally honest, if the DNR reviews this and there is wetland, it may be covered under a general permit because it's going to be a very small, isolated wetland. So I just want to warn you that they're probably going to permit the fill.
Does this have to have a liner? Because he's, he says big circles in the middle. Does that have to have a liner?
I don't believe it has a liner.
There's, there's a filtration fabric that is placed to get to the pipe. Because there's a pipe that if there's any burden that goes through the soil at the, at the rates, that's why we have that displacement off to the east. I've been looking at this with Brian, the engineer, for two and a half years prior to even us doing anything as far as coming up with the best case scenario for everybody to get this taken care of. And then Brian had asked my engineer to even do further, further analysis, and that's the reason that we've got those calcs all the way down to exactly what needed to be done.
Yeah, I mean, because I should correct, water does drain to the east and then I believe it drains to the southeast. Does that make sense? That you, they can't really stop that. They're not changing that. The idea is to prevent the, an increase in volume and rate.
So this in the middle here, is this going to be a storage area? Is that what that circle is?
That red is.
Should, well, doesn't that need to have a liner? When you have a storage area?
No.
Oh, is that different from any other storage?
All the detention ponds in the city, none of them have a liner. They're just.
Like a wet, like a wet detention basin that is intentionally meant to always hold water, you know, a lot of those have liners in them. Or like, I think.
Like, like the church over there on eighty-three.
There's a couple churches I know.
We have one, the, the big city one on the Dix property that had a liner.
Summer lines with.
Ended up in a clay liner.
Retaining short-term volume of water to disperse it in the ground. This isn't something that we're trying to have as a retention pond for using for anything else. It's, it's supposed to drain through the soils. That's what I was getting at. There's a filtration fabric just to keep silt out. That's what that base.
Yeah, I would think you'd have to have something like that.
And then the other thing that will take place, which we actually did not discuss, but it's, it's part of our plan, just like it was the first time, is that there is a little bit different, like it's like a, I forget what it's called. It's a very thin material that goes over the top. It's more or less like, like kind of like you see those straw rolls.
An erosion mat?
It, it's basically left there for using wetland plants. And that's the reason you saw those cattails, by the way, is I actually did put in wetland grasses, as Brian is aware, to get that to suck up water in those areas. That's what I'm getting at, is that we're doing things to, the checks and balances in advance.
Yeah, you, you want the grasses and soils to suck up the water, otherwise you will be forcing standing water, like more of like a pond.
Well, the, the three items that Amy's recommending is a new erosion control permit. Having the city arborists look more carefully at this, which would go hand in hand with this forty percent trees. And then getting everything done by October fifteenth. I don't know if that's possible. Depending on the motion that comes out of this.
And then I do have added, the wetland area shall be assessed by DNR staff and all necessary permits issued prior to commencing construction and prior to the issuance of the erosion control permit.
Absolutely, that would be the.
Yeah, where I was going with that is if, kind of playing off what you said, what we've done in other situations, if, if there's like two or three steps that have to get done that are black and white and not judgment calls, then we could, we could do a motion based on two steps are met that are clear, yes, no's. And then if everything else is in code, then you don't have to create more bureaucracy out of it. But I'm not sure I'm following what the issue, I think I know what the issues are.
You could just add, the city will make its best efforts to complete it on a timely basis. That's all you can do. In addition to all these other points.
I think, sorry to break in here, but I think what it comes down to is quite honestly making sure that we have our checks and balances done by said date, that we can know that we can start going on the project. Sorry, that we can start going on the project, and if there is issues, then Amy and I and Brian can discuss, like, okay, we have to shut down this portion, we can seed this area, and we can move forward in spring if, if the time doesn't allot it because of the fact that the DNR might take.
I'm going to be honest with you, I doubt the DNR is going to get out there and fully assess and get back to us by the end of September.
But I would still like to make sure that we get this motion to pass so that when checks and balances are done, we can start doing it. If it's in early spring, then we get on it and we get it done. Because what has been happening is that we're doing it in very small staggered amounts, because as a landscaper, I might come up with fifty yards every couple of weeks. That's not going to fill up thirty-five hundred yards. So having another company come in that they're bringing the fill in, we can get this done in much more steadily fashion and get it done so that we don't have the disturbance. It's what it comes down to for me.
So if you want to craft a motion that's, you know, dependent on staff review and acceptance, that can be done. Or we get those items taken care of and we reconvene with this, this matter.
What Kelly was speaking of is dividing it up. That's what it sounds like you were alluding to, was you wanted to get approval, at least get approval on the big lot, which is to the east.
No, we don't, we don't, we're not doing anything to the east.
Okay, so you don't need any approval for the east side other than trees?
Yeah, the only reason why I included that parcel is that the drainage from this project is being directed to his other site.
Well, okay.
To offset it a little bit.
All right.
So why don't we just have these three, if we can put another comment in there about city review and our, DNR review. And nobody can control the DNR except for the DNR.
I'm well aware of that.
Right. Okay, I'll move approval pursuant to the points one, two, and three. It's listed by the city planner. In addition, review by the DNR on issue of wetlands. And general review by staff.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
I'm going to abstain.
And Laura abstains. Okay, motion carries. Thanks, Sean.
Yeah, thank you very much, guys. Very nice to see you. And nice to see you, Scott. It's been.
It's been a while.
Sean, it sounds like you, you are going to be added to the Public Works Agenda though, meeting, which is next week, Wednesday? Seven, six-thirty?
Six-thirty, right here, next week, Wednesday.
And that is pertaining to just the runoff, isn't it, Brian?
Yeah. Stormwater things we'll look at.
Maybe have your engineer come to that one. Maybe. They'll, they'll ask more technical questions.
Oh, yeah, and I won't know those answers. That's a good idea, that's a reason I hired him. All right, I will see if he can come next week, Wednesday, six-thirty.
All right, thanks. Okay, moving on then to item eleven A, comprehensive plan zoning ordinance revisions. Providing feedback, initiate an application to amend the text of chapter fifty-two dash one-four-two, grand twenty-two. The arson in workshops and studios, and this was brought about by the trailer company, Billbar Farms, right?
Billbar Farms, yep.
If you want to summarize things, Amy.
Okay, so Bonnie came in a few months ago and gave a concept presentation because she does own, well, she owns property south of Neshota Road.
You can come forward, Bonnie.
Her parents have property north of Neshota Road, which is where the Billbar Trailer Storage and Sales is. Tractor and trailer sale and storage. And was hoping to do a farmer's market type business on the property and eventually it could possibly become a year-round thing and be incorporated inside the permanent buildings. Plan Commission seemed to, you know, in general terms, support the idea with a code amendment that was protective of, of the neighborhood and other properties because this amendment would not apply to just her property, but to any property that, that may be zoned or meets the criteria of however we address the code. So for this meeting, this is really a discussion, an initial discussion, provide feedback, and if you're comfortable, you can initiate an application. What we'll probably do is, I, I have not presented this to our attorneys yet, so they'll have to take a look at it. It could be refined. Maybe this isn't exactly how it ends up getting written. But this is what I came up with for now. And then eventually, you know, Bonnie is going to want this to go to public hearing and, and try to get this adopted within the next few months. But so for tonight, I'm going to give an introduction and get your feedback and see if you're ready to initiate the application or not. And then what we would do is, then I would talk to our attorneys, bring it back in September, and then in September, if it sounds good, that's when we would schedule the public hearing for October. So we're not, we're not scheduling a hearing for September at this, at this time. So what I did is first, it's always nice if you can use existing language in the code and build off of it if it fits. And so I was looking for conditional uses. This is a use that is going to be unique depending on the property circumstances and the, and the surrounding residential uses and what have you. So I did build it into the conditional use section, not as a permitted use by right. And then when I went into the conditional uses, so a public hearing would always be required if somebody came in, there was one use that was similar. And often, this use in other municipal codes is actually allowed in agricultural districts to accommodate those antique barns or craft, craft barns and stuff. So it's an artisan and craft workshop and studio. And right now it's allowed in CBD one, B one, and B one A, and it focuses more on the production of small arts, crafts, home furnishings and similar products. Because the actual sale of them is already permitted by right in those districts, so that's why it doesn't have to include that part. So I added, and in the A-one districts, and then said occasional outdoor display and sale is only approved if recommended by Plan Commission, approved by Common Council, including the location and frequency as part of that conditional use permit. And then it can't negatively impact the appearance and, and needs to be compatible with the surrounding area. And then there's additional requirements if the property happens to be in the A-one agricultural district. And that would include the property has to be a minimum of five acres in size. That the workshop and studios can include the production and/or the sale of these products, and I included agricultural-related goods. The property shall not be located in a platted subdivision. Shall have an occupied single-family residence on the property. I believe there is a residence. The idea there is that you have somebody permanently looking over the property as, as a residential use. The sale of food or beverage, whether prepackaged or made on-site, and live or piped music is only permitted if it's allowed as part of the CU and site plan. If you don't put anything in there, then you might end up being kind of obligated to approve it. This gives you the ability to decide whether or not it is or isn't appropriate for that site. And then I do have highlighted in here that I think it's in this one, that food trucks, yeah, food and beverage trucks are prohibited unless allowed on a temporary basis as part of the CU and conditional, part of the conditional use and site plan. There's some concern about food trucks and, and by staff, and that food trucks can take away from the businesses that we have in the city that, that are, that do have brick and mortar, do pay, and are subject to much more stringent restrictions regarding restaurant licensing. So I think the idea there is, you know, we continue to talk about that or think about it for next month's meeting. I think what Bonnie's looking for, and she can speak for herself when I'm done here, but you know, that maybe on an occasional basis, she would have a coffee truck kind of like at Belfry or something more minor in nature to serve the people that are coming. Proper sewage disposal facilities shall be provided. I have in here that portlets are prohibited unless allowed on a temporary basis, and then additional conditions such as screening and length of time are allowed, may be placed on any approvals. It might be better to I'm going to ask our attorney, it might be better to remove the reference to portlet and, and deal with that specifically as part of a specific application, or we're by putting it in there, we may actually be encouraging people to use them. But like for, for Bonnie's instance, for the first year to two years, she wants to start on a smaller scale and possibly have a portlet and then move into a permanent bathroom with new construction. Which on this property, if it's completely screened from the neighbors and, and it's hidden, it used temporarily, maybe that's okay. But I don't think you want that on all properties. And sufficient parking shall be provided and be dust-free. And then you would review and approve the actual surface type, whether it has to be gravel, pavement, or concrete as part of the specific review. And then it shall abut or have access to a collector or arterial street, and that understanding that improvements may be required based on traffic volumes and site distance and, and where it is. So that's what I have so far. And then, you know, I don't want to get, I did include her materials in, in my report from her concept presentation. But I would just caution you, this piece of what's being proposed is not really related to the use on the Billbar property. You can keep that in the back of your mind, but it's really a village, or village, citywide scale issue is a text amendment right now. So if this text amendment gets approved, then Bonnie's going to have to come back again and actually submit her conditional use application with detailed materials.
Can you introduce yourself, Bonnie? I'm sorry. I didn't see you behind the pillar there.
Bonnie, no, I'm two hundred Neshota Road, Neshota, Wisconsin, five-three-zero-five-eight.
Thank you. So as Amy said, this is a zoning ordinance that cover the entire city. Is there anything else you need to add, Bonnie, or?
I think Amy covered everything. Obviously, I would like to do it in phases, and we discussed that earlier. Obviously, that would be at the next meeting when I present the overall plan, so.
So this is laying the groundwork for that.
Correct.
The only thing I questioned was, where did the five acres in size come from?
I put it in there. They have, do you know how many? There's ten. Ten acres? Yeah. So a lot of times, so A-one, you're supposed to have, I believe it's three acres, a minimum of three acres. That would be another option, is just to require three acres. That would be another option, is just to require three acres, that means they have to have a conforming lot in order to have the use. That would be a reasonable option too. Putting in five acres is just requiring, ensuring that it's a large enough size to accommodate the type of use that's being proposed provides a little bit more, you know, distance or protection from the neighbors, cuz it's just, you're looking at properties on a bigger scale, and reduces the viability. So I was thinking, like in your city, you have a lot of three, you have a lot of one acre, two acre and three acre parcels. I did not analyze how many three acre parcels are in A one. And it's just a matter of cautioning, opening it up to too many, too many properties in the city. Which we could, I could at the next meeting tell you how many properties could possibly, this could end up.
We have half acre agricultural lots on Highway eighty-three. That would not be good.
No, so we definitely wanna, I think you definitely wanna keep them off of non-conforming parcels.
Right.
But you pro, could probably go with the three acres.
We had any other interest besides Bonnie? For something like this?
I did get in, it, it's different, so I, and I thought about that when I was writing this. Because this whole acre business thing is super popular right now in a lot of communities. I did get a request for a property that's owned agricultural, that is not similar to this use, but it's like in the same family, which is prob, which will end up resulting in another text amendment, if it, if it were to move forward.
I thought it was, well done Amy, maybe on the element of acreage, give some thought to, by definition be probably subjective, but your earlier point of the five acres and this property, which I'm very familiar with, is the conceptual model of what we think, I believe, where this makes sense. And there might be a place, like if this same property was three acres, probably you'd say it's still okay. But if there's a three acre lot, that's not in this kinda setting, you might say it doesn't make sense.
I'll look, is there, actually, there are not a lot of properties in the city, and I can look at arterial collector streets, A one, three acres or more and see how many there are, there aren't many.
Yeah, when you narrow it down to arterials and collectors.
Right.
There probably aren't that many.
I have a question.
Yes.
I do go to something similar to this in Stone Bank, used to be a church?
Yes, of course, yeah, John Gales.
Yeah, and they grow a lot of their own things on-site?
Yes.
Vegetables and that, is that something, and flowers, is that something that you think you'll be doing?
In the future, definitely flowers.
Okay.
You know, big, you know,
Right, rows.
Of flowers where people can self-pick and that sort of thing. Not so much vegetables, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
So five acres might be too much, so the three might make more sense. Although you don't know what, if you have special events, it's gonna draw people, where they all are gonna park, that's the other thing.
I mean, there's significant open land.
Well, you, you have, but we're talking about
Oh yeah.
The ordinance, you know, is, for, three versus five.
For sure.
And five to me makes more sense.
Well, that's why these would be approved on a case-by-case basis, with a conditional use.
Right.
So. But we're looking for comments, so Amy confirmed.
I will look at the lot size.
Anything else? You got enough then Amy?
I think so.
I think it looks good.
Yeah.
As Scott said, I think it's a good real, more than a start.
Yeah.
The framework is there.
Yep.
Yeah, the issue isn't Bonnie's situation, the issue is
Exactly.
Law of unintended consequences.
Keep that in mind, yeah, it's citywide.
Play fences. Hey, something interesting.
The law of unintended consequence.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But I do think this is a great plan, and that the city should look at more of these if they come along.
Absolutely, I think this
Yeah.
Be really enhancing to the community, yeah.
Yeah, building community, that's my whole goal.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
I think it's good.
We don't need a motion on this, or do we?
If you wanna initiate an application, that would actually be good, then, then we'll put, I'll put together the actual application for next month's meeting, and then you can schedule a public hearing. You can tweak things, you don't have to, just cuz you're initiating it, doesn't mean you have to stick to the language.
So, motion for that? Somebody?
I'll move we open up for the application for the text amendment change.
Is there a second?
Second.
Laura, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thanks Bonnie.
Thank you.
Now we are at eleven B. This is concerning the chapter fifty-two again, and the zoning district maps with the primary, secondary, environmental corridor overlays, and relating them to other maps in the city, land use and zoning.
Okay. I am not gonna re, I, we've talked about the background quite a few times, but I mean, if you have any questions, I'm happy to go over what the language calls for, but I saw Dirk in the audience at last month's meeting, so he's gonna have to catch up. I saw him.
Yeah.
Kinda take up a lot of space, you know?
Yeah, so, so I had this example document from the last month meeting that just kinda shows what would happen on, on certain properties. In, in this case, for example, and I'll just continue to run through it. This is a two point two acre parcel on Weber Court that was built on, a lot of trees were cut. They, if they were to come in after this code was adopted, they would be limited to the space that is not green. And then we do need to decide, Plan Commission's gonna decide, needs to decide whether or not they would allow for an envelope to allow for a boathouse on lake properties that are corridor, cuz in this case, the corridor includes the boat, the area where you would have a boathouse, or you could say no. But what we would probably do is, in the ordinance, it says it now, and it would continue to say it, that you have to meet these provisions unless otherwise approved by a building envelope. And you would probably wanna have them go through the full process of Plan Commission and council to create a building envelope that would allow them a view of the lake, some view of the lake, and then you would be able to limit that view. And if you, there are some shoreline cutting provisions in the code that you could use. And usually it's limited to thirty, thirty to thirty-five percent of the frontage can be cut for trees. So we can build those in, I, let's not overthink that right now, but I just, that is kind of, if you put these provisions in place, or you actually regulate what is in your code, cuz it is in the code, they would not be allowed any, any kind of view to the lake. Then there's this other example, this is a one acre property also on the east side of the lake. In this case, they would be allowed to, right now, with existing code, they're allowed to disturb fifteen percent of five acres. They could, they could cut thirty-two thousand six hundred square feet of this lot, which would result in them disturbing about three quarters of the lot. With the new proposed provisions, there is a limitation on that, because not all lots are actually five acres, which is what the current provision assumes. And it restricts to either fifteen thousand square feet or fifteen percent, whichever is greater. So on this lot, fifteen percent would be six thousand five hundred and thirty-four square feet, so they'd be given that larger number and they could disturb fifteen thousand. But that's more than, that's more than half less than what the current code allows. So it would be getting quite a bit more restrictive. Now, this, this lot, as you see it, does appear to comply with the new code provisions, so it would comply. They would just be like, if they ever wanted to put a garage in that back wooded area, that's where they would end up probably running into a problem.
So Amy, I think that lot was part of three or four lots that was developed as a planned development, so as the code enforcement official, would I go with what was approved twelve years ago, or with your new standard?
It would be the new standards, just like the, it actually is in the code, it's just not mapped. This is how the code reads now. Now if you did like a new subdivision, or a new P U D, that's all gonna be part of the envelopes, which is an option in the code, where it can also be established through a building envelope. Okay, then. And then we had these other examples, these are all five acre lots that are environmental corridor, so they would be limited to thirty-two thousand six hundred and seventy square feet. This is kind of the easy, this is the easy math for corridors, cuz it's, at the end of the day, in cor, and with environmental corridor, you're limited to one unit per five acre density. It's just the lots don't actually have to be five acres, but sometimes they are, and when they are, that whole fifteen percent provision actually works because fifteen, thirty-two thousand six hundred and seventy square feet is fifteen percent of five acres. And then, something to consider, this I brought up at last month's meeting, that whole area that has been discussed for development, it's kind of your last major corner for economic development opportunity, is on the twenty fifteen sewer pack maps, is corridor, it's never been mapped prior to that. So right now, it's not regulated, because the city regulates the, I have the two thousand and five corridor maps, cuz that's what shows up on the county's G I S, but it's actually the two thousand corridor maps, which are this, they're, they're the same as the two thousand and five in this case. They were not corridor then. So right now, you're not regulating it, but if you adopt the newest and greatest maps, it is gonna show up as corridor. So this is an area where the city can make a judgment call, and, and you can decide that the economic value of a commercial development in this corner, and this is up to you, is potentially more valuable than preserving the trees, and if that's the case, then you would take this, you would literally remove it from your maps. The caution there is sewer pack is still going to regulate the corridor for sewer extension purposes, and they will decide what they will and won't accept. They're gonna do that anyway. Then, some new properties that I brought up, and I don't know if these address, they're, they're the, really the only ones on the east side, west side, I'm sorry, of the lake, that I found to be very applicable. So there's a couple of really small properties, this one is on the north end of Peninsula Drive, which is a cul-de-sac. And it's about a half an acre in size, and some of it's corridor and some of it's not.
Do we have this on, on our sheet here?
What's that?
Do we have this picture on the?
In your packet? No, I just did this today.
Okay, alright.
Sorry.
I was, I was looking and looking.
So my, mic's back there, so yeah, just keep the screen on, on the TV. So this is a half acre lot, most of it's corridor, this would be an example where right now, the code says, if you have a lot that's partially in and partially out, you have to build out of the corridor. Well, you would not be able to build on, well, first of all, this build, this lot's gonna be super hard to build on no matter what. Did anybody ever come in for permit?
Yeah, they're almost done with the house.
Oh. Okay, well act natural, nothing happened here. Right now, it's not mapped, so we're not, because there's nothing mapped, we're not really acknowledging
So if that was vacant today, and, and this standard was adopted, what can you do with that lot?
Yeah, so if, if the existing standard were in play, they could only build outside of the corridor. With the new standard, we're saying you can disturb up to fifteen thousand square feet, so they would be allowed, obvi, they have to meet all their setbacks, and on this lot, they're gonna get restricted by their setbacks. But they would be allowed up to fifteen thousand square feet of disturbance.
So it's buildable.
The reason why that provision is, is in there is, when you have lots like this, they're old lots that were created prior to corridors ever existing, and there's a lot of disturbance activity, and so you're trying to give them, throw them a bone for, I mean, they need to be able to build something. Okay, then, the north end of Stone, Stonebridge Isle, same kinda thing, this is another small, this is a one acre lot, but there's that little corridor on the, on the
Tip.
The tip. You wouldn't probably be able to build there anyway because of shore setbacks, but the disturbance in this case, you would have to build completely out of the corridor, even if you could build in that, because you have plenty of space that meets the fifteen thousand square feet.
And there is a house haunted already, right?
And that one has a house, so, you know, they would have to deal with it. Now in this case too, because it's just that, the, the tip, if they wanna build a boathouse, they can build it somewhere else, and there's plenty of room to do that.
Yeah.
Amy, can they clear that area?
On the tip?
And not place a structure?
No, no, this is disturbance. That's why the numbers, that's why the number is fifteen thousand square feet and not six thousand or five thousand, it's everything, it's your yard, your septic system if you have one. Patios.
So all of those
Old lawn.
Boggs. And I think the ones right near there are owned by these property owners, they're clear those all the time, so there has to be some kinda communication on that.
I'll, and I'll, we'll go to that piece next, or I'm gonna go off of this and go on to G I S. So here's just a little example of different lot sizes and what would be allowed at fifteen percent. So again, you're allowed fifteen thousand square feet or fifteen percent. Once you get up to that five acres, you're getting to the maximum, it says the maximum allowed is thirty-two thousand six seventy. So if you have a ten acre parcel, you're still limited to thirty-two thousand six hundred and seventy with the new code. Everything less than five acres gets smaller and smaller disturbed area, and then on the real small lots, you're gonna be limited to the fifteen thousand instead of fifteen percent. But again, keep in mind, if it's partially in and partially out, and there's a unique circumstance, the city can accept a building envelope, but they're gonna have to like, they have to deed restrict it. It'll either be on a C S M, a subdivision plat, or through a deed restriction. Here's an example, and then one of the other things is, right now, your comprehensive plan encourages the protection of corridors and isolated natural areas. Isolated natural areas are isolated in, in that they're smaller pockets. But your zoning code does not reference isolated natural areas at all right now. So here's an example of a pocket on the west side of the city where these are isolate, lots with isolated natural resource areas. They're ranging from like two acres to, I put it up here, three point seven acres. So they're gonna be limited somewhere between fifteen thousand square feet or fifteen percent of their lot area. And you can see in this case, well, what sewer pack did is they drew the line beyond their disturbed areas. But essentially, they're, each of these lots would be given fifteen percent.
Is that an amount of allowable encroachment?
No.
So it's just on the lot?
Yeah, so the way that the code would, right now, you have, all disturbance has to be outside of the corridor. The way that I'm, have it drafted, let's say this nine 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 zero zero two, the buildable area was less than that fifteen percent or fifteen thousand square feet, whichever one applies. They can, they can go into the corridor to get to that number, but you have to use the area outside of the corridor first.
So like a, like a vacant, a new lot, not such a big deal, but those are all occupied, and they have rear yards that are developed in, into that area.
Yeah, you, we are, they have existing legal non-conforming structures, we're not gonna do anything about that.
I'm talking about like fire pits and landscaping?
Yeah. If it's new, if it's, if it's there, it's there, like that. But if they come in and they ask for a detached garage, or to do additional cutting, and there's gonna be education, cuz people are gonna cut stuff, they don't know the rules are there.
It's on the sale of the house, when they, I know someone who lives there, and lived there forever.
Yeah.
And when they leave, someone's gonna buy it and say, look at this big backyard.
And wanna cut it all. Well, it would be a violation if they did. And it would be a violation if they did. It is now, just so you know, it is now, we just don't have them mapped.
Yeah, it just, I wasn't here a couple meetings ago, was what's driving this, is some of the big topology clear cutting that's gone on, on
Yeah.
Some big construction, and we wanna limit that, that's the driver behind this?
Well, the driver is actually that right now, you have a comprehensive plan that recommends the protection of corridors. Your zoning code has an environmental corridor overlay district, it is in the code, but there's nothing mapped. So the layperson would have no idea, they have corridor restrictions, Scott has no, I mean, he's not, he's looking at the zoning maps and I don't know. You know, kinda, Laura, Laura pointed out a wetland on a, well, there's nothing that's telling us there's a wetland on that property. Same thing here, it's not fair to a homeowner when there's nothing telling them that it's
Right.
Present.
Exactly.
But it's in the code. And it, and so, and they are, the corridors are
So what this is doing is putting a map on top?
Putting a map, and then once it's mapped, you know, it will be very visible.
If we're not changing, what are we debating, if we're not changing the code?
We are changing the code, because right now, and this is really old language, the, a lot of communities ordinances had, and some are changing it, that you can disturb fifteen percent of five acres, and that's how it reads. And so if you, if you interpret it literally, whether you have two acres, three acres, five acres, or ten acres, you get to disturb fifteen percent of five acres. you get to disturb fifteen percent of five acres. Where the proposed provisions are intended to scale it to the actual property si, size, so it's fifteen percent of, it's fifteen percent of the lot up to thirty-two thousand six hundred and seventy square feet. And then on small lots, you're all, you're given a minimum of fifteen thousand square feet.
So we're debating those tweaks and then throwing a map on top?
Yes.
Or not debating, but that's.
And whether or not you want to regulate isolated natural resource areas. So there's, mapping them, you have to decide, you know, we, we, you really should get up to date with your current maps, but I do think you need to determine whether or not you want to include the CN ninety-four patch. And then, um, so that would be mapped, and then if you're going to map them, updating the code language so it's a little more relevant, or it does get complicated. There's a lot of properties that are partially in and partially out. I don't know about in the city, but in general, that the, if you only build outside of it, it doesn't work, and you're going to have people coming in for variances and stuff, so you, you're better off just making a code that will function properly. And then, um, and then you need to decide whether or not you want to include isolated natural areas.
Amy, will there be permitted uses in these different overlays?
It's this, the permitted uses are the uses allowed in the underlying district. This is just an overlay.
What about dead trees? Can I remove a dead tree?
Yep, it's in the code. Dead, you can remove dead disease, um.
I mean, where would that be in the code? If it's not, where would I, where would someone find that?
In the environmental corridor overlay district section. So now you're going to see an overlay district show up on the zoning map, and in addition to going to R1, that's where you're going to get your lot size, that's where you actually get your minimum lot size and width, and what you can do, setbacks, offsets. You're also going to look at the corridor, which is just disturbance.
So if there's current situations out there, if this comes to fruition, are we making non-conforming lots? If they have the decks and they're into areas that?
No, you're, well, you're kind of, you're, they are disturbing and they've disturbed an area that's protected. You wouldn't take that away from them, but they can't disturb more of that area. They can't make that deck bigger if they're in the corridor.
So what's there is permissible, but anything extra would not be.
Yep, just like any other legal non-conforming structure. The other thing you can do is you can have sewer pack go out and map it, and they will often cut those areas out. Or, or they can come in and ask for a special, and, but you don't want to get into that, um, you know, setting that precedent either.
Amy, how about the removal of invasive species, buckthorn?
Yes, you can remove it.
There's a list of things you can do.
Dead disease, dying, and invasive species can be cut. What I do in, and it's not established in here yet, um, I do actually regulate corridors or have in, in other communities. They have a cutting, a, a cutting permit, and we encourage that everybody, whether it's dead disease, dying, or anything, come in and get a permit, and they don't have to pay a fee for tho, those, but so that it's documented. Otherwise, we don't know after the fact. So it is new. It, the interesting part is for like developers, Nagawica Heights, Hawthorne Farms, um, St. John's. They're so familiar with environmental corridor rules that they come in with the assumption of already meeting all of these different rules, because, because they're not uncommon rules in sewer packs, um, area, and they cover seven, a seven county area.
Are these the latest maps?
New guidelines become effective, um, once it goes through here in the common council immediately?
So we haven't, you haven't yet initiated an application, so you need to initiate an application, schedule a public hearing. And then if you adopt the language, you would be making a recommendation, and then it would go to common council. Um, as part of that, we would incorporate the maps would be part of it. There are maps in the packet. I don't think they're a hundred percent ready. What they, what we've done so far is had sewer pack, um, reach out and get the two thousand maps and the two thousand and fifteen maps, so you can see the comparison and the change, and then actually the areas they cover. And then there's a separate map in there for just the isolated natural areas that you can look at to see what properties would be impacted if you also regulated isolated natural resource areas.
So, it seems to me this is significant enough. Is there a way to get the message out differently than just the normal posting where it goes over everybody's head? And then all of a sudden, the game's changed versus giving them the opportunity to come in and share their opinion?
I'm trying to think. You have a newsletter. I don't know how often it goes out.
Twice a year.
Twice a year.
Twice a year. That would be a good vehicle.
One already, did it go out like this?
Usually January.
January, June.
June, yeah.
Um, I mean, so you could wait until the new year and have something posted in the newsletter informing people of an open house, or?
Or you could just send out something once it's scheduled, you know, like two weeks before, a special letter saying this, city officials are looking at making changes, blah, 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 if you have an interest.
Like a public hearing, you'd have to post it in the paper?
It does have to be posted in the paper for sure, and it'll be posted on the, um, it'll be posted on the city's website, and they could even post it as a news alert.
Yeah.
Um, and you know, there's a lot of people on notify me, um, that will get the meeting notices anyway. But if you do want individual mailings to go out, you have to determine, I don't know what the costs are.
I don't know if you need individual mailings. I just think the standard, you know, inch in the local paper.
You could always send it out with our tax bills.
Yeah, that, that'll get reviewed.
You could do it, um, I just did this in another community as, not in the, I mean, it does need to be in the public hearing section, but a separate mailing that it costs a little bit of money, but it's an actual heading, like a uh, news release section that will be a little more prominent. That would be another option.
Okay.
Talk about a hard topic to communicate in a two paragraph notice.
Yeah.
It is hard.
Yeah, it is.
Um, in, in the press release, you probably want to say something, uh, I mean, we would craft something about a little bit more just about like tree cutting in general, and, I mean, they, they are not going to understand all of the terms. There has been discussion at the council level or interest in some tree protection provisions by some of the members, so this was one step that you already have a tool and it's not being used, you know, could this be a, uh,
Attention gatherer.
Something to start with?
Yeah, I think it would. I think the key is to alert enough people that know that if they have a, a dog in this fight, there's a meeting, they can come and express themselves.
Well, that's what I was thinking, is this really is for people who are in a PEC, right?
Right.
We could probably.
Is it possible to nail those residences down and send them a postcard or something?
I think, I think that S E H can query the properties that, I think they can create a list, actually, an address list. Um, so we could send, we could send it directly to those people. Yeah, the people outside of the corridor.
Yeah, no, that would make sense.
But it affects a lot of people. I think larger parcels south of I ninety-four. I'm thinking Nagawaki Park area. I'm thinking Nagwika Road, anything near the river. I mean, those are larger parcels where they may want to graze. They may want, I mean.
All of these bogs that are getting cut, I mean, some of it is trash trees, but some of it isn't, and they're just trying to increase their view. And, like I said last time, and maybe this has nothing to do with those bogs breaking off. I don't know, but if we're going to have a requirement on that, it'd be nice to have people be aware of it.
Yes.
And be able to come in and speak their mind.
Yeah, so that area, that's an interesting area, because that whole area is restricted regardless, because it's all wetland.
Oh, okay.
But, but, but they're not restricted by the cutting necessarily in the wetland area, so it's, I guess, the, the cutting they do need to be aware of. They won't really be impacted by where they can build.
Right, but it is the cutting, I think.
Well, are we in agreement that we want to initiate a application?
Yes.
Yes.
I think so too, but then we want to add to that to, I guess, have Amy and city staff figure out a notification process.
For a public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah, which would be the best time and the vehicle to make that happen.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, I mentioned last time, just my opinion, I would give the city some freedom on that developable area over by sea and the interstate. I mean, you could always put it in place, but once you have it in place and somebody wants to put a Costco there and you say, well, you can't do it anymore, I'm, you know.
Well, the thing with that too is it's, it's been discussed for so long without consideration given to corridor, that throwing that on at this point is a pretty big, uh.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Change.
So can we get a motion to initiate a, a text amendment application?
I'll make a motion to engage a text amendment motion.
Application.
Application.
Notification.
And notification process.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you, Amy.
Yeah, who was the second?
I was.
Oh, Dirk. Dirk Woken. Okay, next is, uh, reports of city officials. Amy, anything else?
No, thank you.
Uh, Scott?
No, nothing.
Alright. Uh, the next meeting is September twenty-fourth. And we are then adjourned at nine oh five.